This is Jim Taylor. For his quick action during the fire at the Webster Learning Center. I'm looking right at him, sorry, because he's right in front of me. And as the staff called 911 to remove the students from the building, Jim quickly extinguished the fire preventing further loss. And in the words of the fire chief, "In addition to preventing further loss, him along with Mr. Sweeney prevented..."
... Those bus drivers in. And we also want to make sure that we are finding different opportunities, different ways that we can really highlight some of the positive. Ranking, so we're going to keep it there.
Day this year, and Channel 13 came out to cover that for us. And we don't deal with the media as much as we used to, just the time. There aren't as many reporters on staff, and we can communicate to the community directly through social media and other avenues, but really, people still get very excited about being on TV. So that was one of the early examples this year of how we promoted that sense of pride with our residents. So we're looking to share information about local, regional, and national recognitions about our schools and district with our community. So you can see how this topic is going to come up in a number of ways in this communication plan. So hopefully, a number of people are going to receive this in the mail in the next few weeks, and you are going to know this, but they're going to say, "Holy cow, I had never heard that before." And so this shows how we're communicating that to the full community, and the next graphic shows how we communicate it on Facebook. And a theme that you'll see as we go through this communication plan is, we don't just communicate something in one way, we communicate it in a lot of different ways. And in some ways, that makes our job more difficult. It's sort of like when, you know, the website became a popular thing, and people said, "We'll put the newsletters on the website, and then we can get rid of the paper copy." But you never really quite get rid of the paper copy. But we continue to publicize this good news in as many different formats as possible.
So in order to help us with that, we want to engage students, staff, community, calling them champions, to really help share our message and get that perception about the district out among our different audiences. So one of the ways that we do this, we have an editorial calendar, and it was included in the back of the communications plan. And really, what that is, is a guideline to help us remember within each month, there are certain things that we want to talk about, there are certain things that need to be communicated within that month, different topics, events, acknowledgements maybe that are pertinent to a monthly type of communication. So this is just an example of one. The first day of school, I reached out to, I have a school liaison in each of our buildings to help me get information from all around the district. So I asked for first day of school photos, and so we had a great number of those photos to be able to share with the community. And then along with that, while I ask them for specific things, they also help me out by sharing things that are going on within the buildings that, because we aren't there, we wouldn't know happen on a regular basis. So these are just a couple of examples. So we have things that we have highlighted recently. There's an after-school club at Berger. We have a unique math lesson within second grade class at Leary. The applied arts technologies classes went on a field trip from Roth, and we got to talk about what they did and why they went on that field trip. And then a fun little thing at Halloween, at the Good Shepherd School, the staff did some literary-based Halloween decorating for the pumpkins, and we were able to showcase that. And it's really just a way for us to work with the different buildings to be able to make sure that the whole community is aware of what's going on in those buildings really every day. Part of what we're trying to do, though, is making sure that everybody's aware that there's a lot of complexity to running a successful school district. So some of the communication that we do is really tying them into all of that and making them become a part of it. So this, just this year, we started working with Thought Exchange, which is a way to poll people, to get their opinions, and have them react to different things, react to what their fellow poll takers have said about a particular topic. And that's been pretty, pretty good so far, so we do have some more planned for this year. This is just showing the ones that we are targeting right now. We're planning fairly soon to have one reaching out to the community and just asking for some feedback, what's important to them about the Good Shepherd property. As we look to make a decision about what's going to happen with that property, trying to find out sort of the pulse of the community, what are they really hoping that they can see happen there? If there's any hot points that we may need to be aware of, and just try to get a feel for what their thought process is. And then after the first of the year, we're going to be reaching out to our seniors. We'd like to find out what their experience has been like. So that will be the first time, really, that we're reaching out to our student population to try to get some feedback from them and understand what their whole school experience has been like. In the spring, we'll be doing another Safety Forum Thought Exchange. We had one last year that really helped to guide the discussions for the Safety Forum that was held in the spring, so we're planning to redo that one again. And then early next summer, we'll look at getting some feedback on the district priorities and see what the community is feeling about those. And then this is just another example, ways that we share information. So we have our newsletter, we have the one that goes out in the fall, and then we have the budget newsletter that goes out in the spring. And then we also have the opportunity with eNews that we can send out district-wide updates and messages and news that come from Bo on behalf of the district, to be able to share that with all of the parents that are in our district. Also new this year was Breakfast with Bo. This was an opportunity to open up the chance for people in the community to come in and just have a really more of an informal kind of an opportunity to meet with Bo and cabinet members, to ask questions, to get to know them a little bit, maybe raise some concerns. So we had our first one just a couple of weeks ago, and Bo and Nerland were the hosts for that one. We had 20, 20 to 25 people that came to it. So it was a nice opportunity. We had a survey that went out afterward and asked people, "What did you think of the format? What did you, you know, was there enough time? Did you like the presentation?" And we got some really good feedback from that. People really appreciated having that opportunity. They really looked forward to having another opportunity. So we do have two more planned for this year. We have, looking tentatively, one late January, early February. I'll be looking at you probably for some timing for that one. And then we'll do another one probably mid-April, closer to budget season, and we'll have Andy and Pat featured at that one. And then we have our social media channels. So people, as Travis had said, you know, media isn't, the traditional media isn't really as big of a target for us anymore. People are consuming their news in a much different way. They want it to come to them in a way that they are familiar with. And they go on their social media, and they like things that they want to get news from. So this is how we are reaching out to our community and people who are interested in hearing from us. So we have YouTube channels. We have one that talks, that features parent education, community interest videos, and now we have started the live streaming of the board. So we have the live stream feed, and then we have a channel where those recordings are housed, so people can go back and view them. And then we have the Facebook page, which at this point is over 5,000 likes. We have a large audience on our page. And we use it really to highlight what we want people to know about: news, events, things that happen daily in our classrooms. It's another source for us to get out emergency notifications. So snow days are posted there in addition to the other channels that we use. We have a couple of regular features. One is the staff spotlight, where we can highlight a different staff member about once a month, and really get a chance to let them shine for a little bit. Another one that we just started is called Day in the Life. I did one for the high school. So I went and I spent a whole day at the senior high school in the Webster Learning Center, and I took pictures, and I visited different classrooms, and I saw what was going on, and I was able to make a whole post about that. And it was a way to communicate to people what life is like for our senior high school students. I could emphasize things like AP classes and Project Lead the Way, what goes on in the cafeteria. It happened to be during homecoming weeks, so we had our pepperell, and we had the sand sculpture being built. So there's a lot of things that we could highlight that people may not really know happen on a regular basis. So that will be something, each month, I'll be highlighting a different school. And just a little deeper dive on some of our social media. So as I said, with YouTube, we have our one channel that we post the parent education and the community videos. We had our opening day video that was popular with all the kids talking about their advice. And then we have our live stream and the archived live streaming for people who want to go and view those later. One thing to point out about our Facebook page is we can get insights, and we can compare ourselves to other local school districts. So if you look here at Webster, they have 5,700 page likes. We have 5,100. And it just shows, you know, how that has changed from the past week. And then it shows the number of posts that they have had this week. Now you can see Webster likes to post a lot. They have 69, as opposed to our three. But what's interesting is if you look at the engagement, their 69 posts got 8,200 people. Our three got over 10,000. So our plan with Facebook is to be very targeted and very deliberate about what it is that we're sharing. We're sharing information that people care about, that our community cares about. We're really trying to make sure that we are putting out the information that they are going to react to. And just to show that wasn't a fluke, if we look here, they posted 46, they got 5,900. We posted three and got over 18,000. And then, if I can get off of it, there we go. It continues, 54 for 6,300 and five for over 14,000. So our 5,000 followers are very engaged with what it is that we're posting. They are reacting to it, they're sharing it, they're commenting on it, they're liking it. Just a couple of recent examples. So the day before school started, we posted a nice little poem about how RH was ready for you. "It's all quiet, but we're ready for you to come." It was the most popular post that the Facebook page had had. Over 700 people liked it, 15,000, almost 16,000 engagements. There were 82 shares, comments, people loved it. And then two weeks later, a little trespasser came and gave us an even more popular post. So we had our raccoon, which people really reacted well to. You know, it started out as just an informative, "Hey, you may have noticed some activity at the high school this morning. It was a raccoon. It's all good." And people really reacted well to that. And so we went with it, and we had comments all day, people loved it. And so we decided that he needed a follow-up post the next day, just talking about the fact that that then became our most famous, most popular post in the history of the page. And even though sequels don't always do very well, this post also did well, reaching over 5,000 people and getting over 28 comments and 20 shares all on its own. So we have some very engaged followers on our Facebook page.
So that leads well into the fifth objective, which is to maximize the effectiveness of communications throughout Rush Henrietta. And so just a little background on the Facebook page, some of you were on the board many years ago, when Dr. Graham said, "The board is interested in social media." So I presented a research paper on Facebook and how local districts were using it, and my recommendation was that we should only start a Facebook page if we were going to do it all the way, fully, really well. And that's the way we've done this page. It's celebrated its five-year anniversary in September, and we are very targeted with it, and it's very effective. And when she talks about engagements, that's how many people like and share and comment. And on some of these posts, we're getting 15,000 impressions like that. It is remarkable. And it's a, it's a really good way for us to share the good news of Rush Henrietta, but also to respond to people when there's a problem. And we, unlike some other districts who, I mean, we just saw an example last week of another local district who deleted a lot of, a lot of comments from one of their posts. And then they deleted the comments where people said, "I can't believe you deleted my comments." We don't delete comments, we address them, and we provide the information that a lot of people don't know, and then typically, they're grateful for that. So this is a chart of what my brain looks like on a daily basis. There's a lot of things swirling in there. And what this chart is doing, it's talking about how we encourage the flow of information between parents, staff, the community, and the district. So what you see in the blue with mass notifications, newsletters, surveys, media on the website, those are the ways we traditionally share information with people in the community. But those are not ways that people can talk back to us and that we can have a real conversation. So some of the newer ways that we do that are with the district Facebook page, with Thought Exchange, with the Facebook page Henrietta Highlights, which needs no explanation. And this year, for the first time, Heather and I are also involved in PTO Facebook groups. So every school has its own parent group page, and we're in there sort of to get a pulse of what's happening, but we also end up answering a lot of questions. And we, this is kind of becoming, this is definitely not an eight-to-four or nine-to-five job anymore. But it gives us a really good way to see what people are talking about, to identify trends, to be able to come to Bo and say, "Are you aware of this? Should we get out ahead of this?" Oftentimes, it's just a matter of misunderstandings, but sometimes people just ask general questions, and we know the answers, so we're able to provide that assistance to them, and I think they appreciate that. And one of the other ways that we're trying to make things more efficient is by totally revamping this year our mass notification system. So this is the way we use eNews and the automated phone calls that we put out. And here's a perfect example of how we were able to sort of make everything more efficient, more identifiable. We have these headers for our eNews messages. You remember, the old eNews messages just came through in plain text, and we held on to that for a long time. But now we have this feature where we're able to make them look much more professional and warm and welcoming, and our principals are doing a really good job of using those. So I just want to talk to you for a minute about the transition to Blackboard. We left the vendor that we used to use, and we had used for about 10 years, and this service has been a huge upgrade for us. And actually, in addition to being an upgrade, was, had a cost savings of about 20%, which was a nice bonus. But what this system allows us to do, eNews is much more effective because we don't have people subscribing and unsubscribing. We ask people to fill out the blue card, the emergency contact information card at the beginning of the year and throughout the year as needed. We take those email addresses off that card, and everyone who's on those cards receives the email. So that is, that is making eNews available to many, many more parents. The phone system is more efficient because it can do a lot, a lot of other things better. So with the phone system, for instance, we can call both parents in the event of a snow day this year, if you have a split custody household. That was like the number-one complaint we received was, "I have the kids tonight, and I didn't get the call." So we will be able to remedy that with this system. Other things that the phone system is allowing us to do is, a very simple thing, but an important thing, is every phone call, no matter what the call was for in the past, came from the phone number out here at the admin building. Now if the phone call is from Jeff Pollard, it can have the Winslow phone number. If it's from the high school, it can have 359-5200. We've gone so far as to make a call about immunizations from the high school's nurse's office. office and give the nurse's office number on the phone, and that's been very helpful for parents. The system allows us very, to very easily be able to create subgroups of students, which is very helpful. Even if you just gave us 10 names or 10 student ID numbers, we could quickly go through, click, 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 record a call off to them. And the newest thing we're doing with this is using it to help parents when we have transportation issues. So, Heather and I are sort of piloting this, where transportation will call in the event of a problem with a bus. So, we had a bus that had, maybe it blew a gasket or something, and it was going to be 20 minutes late. So, I received a call from Shirley, and she said, "Can you put this call out immediately?" And we can do it by the bus number. And we could never do that before. So, if it's bus 582 from Winslow, we can go in and we can look it up, and only the parents of kids who are on bus 582 will receive that. And that has been really well received. And transportation says it's reducing the number of calls and, you know, outreach from concerned parents dramatically. So, we're just going to do that for the next month or two, probably to make sure that we've got all the bugs worked out of the system. But it's very promising, and eventually, our hope is to train some of the head drivers to be able to do that as well, because we may not always be in the office at 6:00 AM or 6:00 PM. So, we are really excited about this. Oftentimes, you, you know, will subscribe to a new software or get seduced by a new vendor. This one's actually working at, maybe even better than we envisioned it.
And then lastly, one of the other things that we want to try to focus on this year, spend some time with, is really defining the Rush Henrietta brand. So, we have things that are out there, we have our logo, we have the RH Advantage, a great place to learn, a great place to work. But really understanding what is our brand, what does it mean to the community, what does it mean to our students? How does that really present itself in different forms? And trying to be a little more deliberate in the way that we are focusing on that. So, an example of that actually is what you just saw, which was the email headers, and there's footers that go along with each of those. So, it's a very consistent look. So, if you have a student in Winslow and Sherman and Roth, and you're getting e-news from three different principals, they look the same. They look like they came from the same district, they have the same purpose, you know what they are there for, and it really reinforces that for the parents in the district. So, that's just one example of what we're taking a look at and really trying to be a little more deliberate in the way that we are using the brand and defining the brand this year.
So, in conclusion, we would like to thank you for your support of Communications and the Office of Community Relations. I would like to say, this is not in the script, but as you can tell, Heather has done a masterful job in just one year of learning an awful lot about this district. 15 years ago, you may or may not know, some of you definitely don't know this, the Office of Community Relations had three employees in it, and we weren't doing nearly what we're doing today. So, I personally want to thank you for having an office with two people in it, because we are busy every day and we need every hour of that. And your support of that is very much appreciated. Any questions?
Great job. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I too just want to give them kudos. If you'll remember, the creation of the communications plan was one of my goals last year that you were all holding me accountable for. And I kind of dumped this on their lap and said, "This is one of my goals to be here." And I, you know, need you to really take the reins with this. And they did, and I think they did an amazing job. There was amazing work happening prior to the creation of this plan, but as Travis said at the outset, it wasn't really documented. And so, they were very thoughtful and very strategic in the way that they put this together, as you can see. And so, I just want to say that I'm very appreciative, and I think that the plan exceeds expectations and really hits what we were looking for as far as kind of giving us strategic direction for where we want this work to go in the future.
Thank you. We'll be back at it tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And now, our second workshop, District Priority Plans of Work. Dina?
So, Dina is going to go first, but I just want to sort of frame this for you. You had a chance to look at our plan of work. So, we, at our last meeting, looked at our year-end report, and Dina had the opportunity from an instructional perspective to kind of describe the current state of the district. And so, this is where we talk to you about the priorities, but what the focal points will be for each of the priorities, in a sense, sort of framing some of the problems and talking about what we're going to be doing about it. Dina will kick things off in terms of looking at our instructional priorities around ELA, math, and ICT. I'm going to pinch-hit for Nerlan tonight, because if you've been around her over the course of the past week, she's been pretty sick. And so, it's good that she's not here and is getting better and hopefully getting some rest. So, I'll pinch-hit for special education and mental wellness, and Pat will sort of, we're just going to give the highlights and then give you an opportunity to comment or ask questions as we move through. Is that okay? All right. So, I'll turn it over to Dina.
Highlights.
Highlights. That's right.
Got it. What I like to do tonight is highlight the improvement plan that we have put together based on the results that we had last week. If you recall, English Language Arts is our area of concern this year due to a trend that we have seen, the decline in all grade levels. So, therefore, what we really honed in on was really thinking about instructional practices. And when you look at the improvement plan, if you just look at the items that are listed under curriculum, instruction, learning assessments, and intervention, you will see right off the bat, very little curriculum, because we have done a very good job working with our teachers, principals and directors have really honed in and making sure we're defining what needs to be taught in A8. I talked a little bit, and we've already seen that, to some of our new programs that are doing in high schools and intermediate schools, with some fine-tuning at our primary. But look at all the action items under classroom instruction. Now, it's really about how to implement the what. And we're seeing some variations among classrooms and knowing that there are some teachers that we can learn from, and continuing to gather what specifically needs to be done around instructional practices. So, some of the things that we're looking at specifically is unpacking a lot of our units. When I say unpacking, when you have that what, you know, how do you really take what needs to be taught? Think about the learners in front of you and design lessons and units that can meet the needs of those kids in front of you in your living room. So, a lot of unpacking curriculum is happening. We're using our coaches very strategically this year, working with targeted groups, especially new teachers, or teachers that are involved in our I-COP programs, to make sure we're really looking at how do we help our teachers through systematic coaching cycles in delivering their own instruction, giving them support. The other area that we're really looking at is vocabulary instruction and really around word learning strategies, we're looking at comprehension. And you'll also notice that we're being very, very sensitive to making sure that we're differentiating scaffolding curriculum for our L students as well as our students with disability, which are areas we continue to watch very closely. Learning assessments, just one final, only one action item there, and that is continue to work towards our online assessment, make sure that students have the skills that they need. And again, look at intervention, look at all the action items there. We are continuing to focus on our students who are not reading benchmarks and making sure that we're being very diagnostic and knowing exactly where they're breaking down the reading process and putting specific programs to meet their needs. We've spent a lot of time in the last few years training our reading teachers, attending specialized reading programs, and really working with some of our medianest kids to give them the support. So, that's why you see so many items very specifically on specialized programs that we're offering students in need of intensive interventions in the district. And then always refine tuning our progress and monitoring that to make sure that we're using the best practices there. So, in the area of ELA instruction, we're really honing in on interventions and classroom instruction. Any questions around ELA? Not the other highlighting. Getting good at my summarizing.
That's right.
All right. On to math. Math, as you saw last week, we're very pleased with. Again, we've spent a lot of time implementing a new program, K through A, and now this year, algebra. Our Eureka Math Program is our primary resource. However, we take a primary resource when we work on best instructional practices. And what you'll see is we're doing a lot of fine-tuning. The reason why curriculum development is so large, it has many items for our improvement plan in math, is because all the work that we're starting to work towards with our secondary program, we spent some time speaking to you about those improvements that we're doing and we're thinking about the different ways that we teach algebra, using more conceptualized learning concepts, a lot of hands-on with our technology course. So, what you're seeing is a lot of curriculum work is really being focused up to the secondary level. That curriculum work is happening this year to start going to implementation next year. So, next year, you'll notice in the improvement plan, you're going to see a lot of things under instruction regarding secondary math program. But overall, our math program and instruction is coming along really nice. You'll see that we have learning assessments listed here, and you saw a little of this from the Hedges Borgers of the other week at Winslow. The assessments work this year has been more fine-tuning and making sure that the length of the assessments are appropriate, and we also have a creative idea in how we dischaper our assessments now for students. So, that's being implemented. And as well as continuing to look at our interventions, where I think that we do realize that we're seeing good growth to have our kids that perform at grade level and above, but we're really getting concerned with some of our students who aren't reading benchmarks. So, we're looking a lot at the interventions that we're giving with our math intervention specialists, and also trying to build the capacity of our teachers to also provide interventions within the classroom setting too, and not just rely on the math interventionist. So, you'll see we have a lot of specific action items around academic intervention for math. Okay? Any questions about our math improvement plan we've been doing? And then the ICT work, as you know, this is still a work in progress. A lot of work still needs to occur here around the curriculum, instruction, and developing the assessments. You'll see we have a lot of action items in each one of those categories. In the area of curriculum, we continue through a matrix of making sure that all our units in every grade level and every content area continue to be upgraded, meaning that we put the ISTI standards in, and we're designing assured learning experiences of how our students are using technology to meet their content area goals. So, that's a long work in progress, continues to work, making sure that we are explicit on what those learning experiences need to look like in classrooms. With that, we're getting a lot of support for our teachers around how you implement the instruction. We talk a lot about how you take traditional approaches and you shift them to be more, to upgrade them and to be able to include all our ISTI standards in the lessons with best practices. In the area of assessments, third grade continues to be refined as far as the capstone goes. I mean, it's, we've learned a lot, we're doing with our kids, and even though our success rate is very good, our teachers are still trying to find more ways to integrate it to make it more seamless. Sixth grade and ninth grade are running slowly. Again, a lot of feedback from teachers. We have teams maybe after school that we provide curriculum pay to. They continue to refine the capstone projects. And the high school one is a work in progress. We're doing some work this fall with some teacher teams, and even using a lot of our current ten graders who went through the ninth grade capstone project to give us feedback on how to shape the high school. The high school, we're hoping to do some pilots of different concepts this spring and then do more work next year around students collecting a portfolio, because the high school capstone is being designed not just to do one project. It is with students making a portfolio and collecting evidence from different classes on where they met the various standards. And then their senior year will be more of a project. So, stay tuned. Very complex. Kudos to Brad and the ICT coaches. Tim Schaefer has really embraced this, and we have some key teachers working on this. So, when you leave a project and your head hurts, you know you're on the right track. We're really thinking about what this is going to look like for our high school. It's more in-depth, and it's going to look much different than the ninth grade at a higher level. So, we're really getting excited about that, but a lot of work to come. So, that's a lot of our work there this year on the ICT work.
Okay. I'll jump in and speak to special education. There are really three overarching areas where we're focusing our attention in terms of our improvement plan. First and foremost, developing a continuum to better support individual learning needs. One of the key features here is the implementation of the I-COP model in the elementary grades. So, we're going to be assessing that model in terms of effectiveness and the impact on student outcomes as they relate to academics and behavior, and also looking at the effectiveness of some of the changes that were made to consolidate CT services at the primary level as well. We also want to continue to refine the process by which services are assigned and individual education plans are developed, and to try to increase the number of opportunities for students to be educated in the least restrictive environment. And then lastly, in my estimation, most importantly, looking at ways that we can address gaps as they relate not only to classification, but also discipline and achievement. Because when we're looking at our data through an equity lens, which we're doing through this school improvement planning process, and you're looking at achievement by subgroup with special needs students, that's where we have our largest gaps. So, you know, the way that we're trying to address that is by very carefully monitoring student growth through multiple measures, one of them being our interim assessments. But then also monitoring and looking at ways to improve things like attendance, suspensions, referral rates for students with disabilities, because we also see that same trend happening as it relates to the way that we apply the code of conduct. So, those are really our three areas of focus. Again, developing a more robust continuum, looking at refining our processes, but then ultimately, looking at measures that are going to impact student outcomes.
I, this just kind of popped in my head, so I'm not sure if I'm articulating the way I want to. We were talking about the least restrictive environment, and I'm just concerned about being able to communicate that effectively with our families, because that's some of the comments I get back, "Well, the district's not being responsive," because they believe they need more or what is sitting there being placed. And so, I just, I throw that out there as a piece to throw into the plans, you know, how will we communicate with our families after they have their CSE meetings or whatever that we're working together? And this is really what we think is the best, because some of them feel that there should be more given to a child. So, that's just something, a little buzz I've been hearing.
So, I'm going to say a couple of things about that. The first thing I'll say is, I think for a long time, and not just here, but in every district I've worked in, that was the mindset, is let me just continue to throw more and more and more on an IEP. And I think the thinking was, it was in the best interest of a child. I mean, there was no mal-intent there, certainly. It was to try and throw lots and lots of support at a student. But what I think districts have found was that that wasn't a real effective approach for a lot of different reasons. Districts weren't being as thoughtful as they need to be in terms of how you're constructing interventions or what you're putting into writing on an IEP. It wasn't efficient from a cost perspective. And ultimately, it wasn't moving the needle in terms of student outcomes, wasn't making it better for kids. So, I think you're seeing districts go into a different direction, being a lot more thoughtful about what's on an IEP, and genuinely trying to, where it's appropriate, give, make sure that students have access to all the opportunities and the types of learning that general education students get.
that general education students get. And, and so that's the first point I'd make. The second point I would make is that, um, I, you know, I, I think that, um, what was the second point we wanted to make? I just lost. We, we wanted to make sure that we're being thoughtful about what we were putting on IEPs and, um, I totally lost my.
It's all right. I, I just, it's just the buzz I hear, you and I know. I just wanna make sure that somewhere along the line that that message really gets, gets out there, that, I mean, you may feel it's not enough, but being in a general ed situation and getting up full opportunities to participate is, is also very important.
I, I remember the second point I wanted to make is that we don't want it to be one-size-fits-all. Is, is, you know, I've, I've seen districts go in that direction too, where regardless of whether or not it's appropriate, let's just try and mainstream a child. And sometimes kids, they need extra support. They need to be in a more restrictive environment until you can get some things worked out, and then you can, you know, give more access. So that's, that's where we're headed, is, is just trying to be a bit more thoughtful, a bit more strategic, and to really think long and hard about what students need on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions on special ed? Just glad that, that thought came back to me. You helped me with that with your, with your commentary.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. Um, Pat, do you wanna speak about the equity and inclusion priority? And then I'll jump back in after you're finished with mental wellness.
Thank you. And I hope to give you just highlights of everything that's going on, because there really is a lot going on with this, as we are now in our third year of this priority, as a district priority. There's really five major focus areas that I think summarize what we're working on this year and into the next few years. One, of course, is our, our steering committee and its work around the needs assessment, the overarching needs assessment that we're doing throughout the district. A second is professional development related to equity and bias and inclusion. The third focus area, we call culturally responsive practice, which I'll talk about in just a moment. The fourth is our workforce diversity initiative, which is primarily the work of my department, but also with all of our departments and schools. And lastly, a major initiative throughout the district, of course, is restorative practices. So I'll, I'll comment on each one of these. Starting with the steering committee and the needs assessment, we're now entering the second year of the needs assessment. I think we discussed at the board table before that this priority is really on two tracks. We have the long-term track and we have what's going on right now. And the, the, there are many initiatives going on throughout the district that, that are explained in the plan of work. But the work of the steering committee really is focused on that long-range view in terms of identifying areas that could potentially be part of a strategic plan for the Board of Education to consider with regard to addressing any systemic issues we might have in the district with regard to bias, lack of inclusivity, or, or diversity. So the needs assessment now is in the second year. We're working with University of Rochester consultants, as you know, and we've done, they've done some, some data collection already, as well as a lot of unpacking of data that we already had to give us a perspective on some of the data that we might not have had. And we actually, Niran and I, I think are gonna share that with the board at our workshop later this year, some of that data. And this year, they're gonna continue gathering more data. The family survey has gone out. We're really looking to get a robust response so that we can really help to identify what areas do we need to work on in the district and what would that look like going forward. While that's happening, there is a lot of work being done on the committee for our, for the committee's own education and enrichment around this area. And those interactions, those conversations, a lot of, a lot of courageous conversations around the table. May and Diane are both members of the committee, and it's helping really, I think, to help us truly steer and inform the work that we're doing with our staff. And that's the second focus area, is the professional development piece that we're working on with both our school and department staffs as well as our leadership staff. This summer, we engaged with consultants around cultural proficiency, as well as continuing our discussion of implicit bias. At our last superintendent's conference day in October, half the day in each building was devoted to, to really starting that conversation in a deep level around, around implicit bias and what experiences and biases that we might bring to the table that may affect the way we interact with, with kids and with families. So good discussion, and overall, some very positive feedback, but there's obviously a lot of work to do. And interestingly, the other half of that day was spent working in teams around progress monitoring on the academic side, but it relates very closely to this work, and it kinda leads into the third focus area, which is what we're calling culturally responsive practice, cultural proficiency. And that really, if you read the plan of work, resides mostly within the improvement plan under number two, inclusive excellence. That's where you're talking about really digging into the data, the achievement data, the suspension data, attendance data, all various forms of student data by subgroup. So that we're really looking closely at the disparities, at gaps that might exist, at some of the disproportionality we've all talked about, at some of the achievement gaps that Deanna has talked about, and making sure that we're not only looking at all students, but we're looking at the performance of individual students and subgroups of students, and what strategies might be used to address those. That also is involving taking a look at some of our instructional materials, taking a look at, at, eventually taking a look at some of our curriculum and exploring some ways to make sure multiple perspectives are represented throughout. So that the, the sort of metaphor that we like to use is our instruction, our practice needs to be both a mirror and a window. Each kid needs to see themselves and their life experience and their culture in the curriculum and in their experience at school, but they also need to be able to use as a window into others' experiences and cultures as well. So the fourth major focus of, of the plan of work is the workforce diversity initiative, which we are working very, very hard at, comprehensively throughout the district to make sure our recruitment is, is gaining us as wide a pool as possible, that we're addressing and trying to minimize any bias that might exist in the hiring and selection process for new hires and, and as well as what are our policies and what are our practices for induction and retention of, of diverse workforce, since we know that is, that is an area that we definitely need to improve in. And the last area is restorative practices, which my colleague Niran, of course, has probably lead throughout the district with our principals and others. And it's really catching on. We've had, I think you can see from the plan of work, the number of people who've been trained and the number of people we plan to continue to train. We had huge attendance this summer. All the slots were filled this past summer in those three-day period workshops. We've got a couple more scheduled this fall semester, as well as some mini shorter workshops for leaders. So that we're developing not only the capacity of our teachers, but the capacity of our teachers to teach each other and to, to build those skills and the way we implement them throughout our disciplinary process, our relationship-building process, our classroom environment-building process, and supporting the academics accessible to kids. So there's a lot going on. It's an exciting initiative, and we look forward to more great work this year. Any questions?
I just, I noticed, Pat, under these sort of action items for workforce diversity, the item that says the district will establish a senior high school club to grow our own teachers, grow our own future teachers from current students. Now, I remember that was a topic at one of our labor relations committee meetings last year, West Arondacoit presented on their pathways to teaching program. And where they actually, it's not just a club. I mean, those kids are getting academic credits, and they're attending some classes at either, he was like NAS or Fisher or MCC even, but really getting, being able to sink their teeth into, you know, a potential career in education. So this says club. Do we envision going maybe as far as West Arondacoit?
I think if it, if it gets the traction that we think it will get, yes. I think I can easily see us moving in that direction eventually. But in the meantime, it's very exciting, because we have, all the counselors at the high school are involved, and I have, I think there's three other teachers. We're gonna have five advisors, actually. They've already generated a list of kids who are interested in a career in education. We're looking at, we're involving the principals so that we can set up internships and job shadowings right here in the district.
That's fantastic.
You know, tutoring opportunities. And then what we're gonna do is we'll have seminars where we can help work with the students on how do you plan a lesson? How do you prepare for a job interview as a teacher? We've got folks coming from Geneseo to work with them on, on the college process and what to expect from it. So the sky's the limit. It's really a very exciting.
That's, I'm really glad to hear that. And the thing I liked most about how West Arondacoit described, and I hope we're following the same path, is, you know, not just looking for the high achievers, not just looking for the smart kids, but, you know, maybe the kids that the teacher sees something in. It's like, you know what? You know, you might be a B or a C student, but, you know, there's something in you that, you know, you could be a future, you know, educator or somebody who will, I like that, that they didn't just look for the, the honor roll kids.
This is pretty, just the.
Exactly. They're welcome, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a group that looks like the student body, and it's a group that looks, hopefully like, you know, America.
And that is obviously one of our goals. It can't be an exclusionary club.
Right.
One of our, one of our goals is to recruit and make sure that we get a good representation of students in the faculty.
That's great. Sorry, I didn't wanna belabor it, but that's, I, I saw that. I'm just so pleased. That, that's very cool. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to mental wellness, which really has four areas of focus for this year. The, the first area of focus centered around actually hiring a director of wellness and equity. And that person is Diane Wind. She's been a true asset to our team, even though she's only been here a few months. She is in the process of creating a proposal or plan to incorporate social-emotional learning standards within the K-12 curriculum and counseling comprehensive plan, and to provide continuous professional development on strategies for supporting students with significant mental health and social-emotional needs or students in crisis. And at leadership development, our entire administrative team actually went through an hour and a half training with her yesterday, which was very good. So continuing to focus on preventative work that we've talked about at this table and at DPAC and other committees centered around vaping and drug abuse, which we, we know from the youth risk survey is an issue here as it is in districts across Monroe County, the state, and the nation. So coordinating forums which focus on topics based on those results from the youth risk survey. And the first forum's gonna be held in December, and the focus is gonna be centered on depression and anxiety. Looking, again, as I mentioned, you know, some of Diane's work as the director of wellness and equity, but integrating social-emotional learning standards into the curriculum, which has to be done in a way that's thoughtful and strategic, because there's, there are so many demands that are placed on teachers in a classroom, principals in a building, and, you know, as we're, as we're finding, as we're going through this school improvement process, there just isn't enough time in, in the day, you know? And so, you know, we, this is something we value, but it has to be done in a way that's very, very thoughtful and very strategic, understanding that, to just, you know, it's a packed agenda every single day in our classrooms. And then lastly, just connecting with students' families and staff and building those relationships, but also when, when students or families or even staff members are in crisis, being able to connect them with outside, outside therapeutic support. So those are really our, our four areas of focus. Are there any comments or questions regarding the priority around mental wellness? And, and I should note that as a result of the conversations that happened at the, the stakeholder event over the summer, we changed some of the language in that priority to broaden it, if you'll remember. There was a lot of student-centered language, which certainly that will continue to be the focus, but if you'll remember, folks said, you know, we should really just be focusing on the mental well-being of all those within our school communities to be inclusive of, of adults, with an emphasis on, on staff members as well.
It's very exciting to see this priority really develop and be defined and be so thoughtful about the process. It's the mango, the dew, that's very exciting to see happen.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a true need. We're just seeing more and more issues arise that, that impact our students, impact their families, impact our, our staff members, and so it's something that we, we have to be thoughtful about in the way that we support folks. Okay? Then that concludes our, our workshop on the district priorities.
Great.
To be continued.
Good stuff. Very good stuff. All right, next up is district policy, first read. Did anyone have any questions on the first reads? If there aren't any questions, I will accept a motion to move them to second read. Moved by James, seconded by Nikki. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That will go to second read.
Who's on that policy committee? They're just.
Aren't they fabulous? They're just cranking out great work, and it's amazing. And so early, too, they're just so chippier, too. Just love it. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Okay. There were no written reports for consideration for this meeting, but I do have a number of reminders. I just wanna put some things on your radar that are, are happening over the course of the next couple of weeks, because we're entering into the season where a lot's gonna start happening. So tonight was actually the Sherman Cultural Fair that's happening as we speak. Tomorrow night is going to be the cultural fair at Winslow, and that's gonna be starting at 6:30. DPAC will be this Thursday at 6:30. And there will be, amongst other things, a workshop on mental, mental wellness that Diane will be facilitating. The senior high school fall play will be taking place this weekend. The first show is going to be Friday night at 7:00 PM with a second show Saturday afternoon at 2:00 PM. I believe it is Ann of Ringgates. A reminder that the district will be closed on Monday in observance of Veterans Day. And then next week, again, we, we have a lot of events happening. Good Shepherd Literacy Night is gonna be on Tuesday at 6:30. Be a guest reader there. We have a, a Board of Education visit scheduled on Wednesday at 8:15. That's gonna be at Volmer. And then some of you will probably be attending Leary's PTO meeting later that evening. That's gonna be at 6:30. I'm gonna be speaking with, with that group that evening.
That would be me.
I figured. I also just wanna put this on your, on your radar. We are gonna be starting interviews for the Director of Information Services on Thursday, because as you know, Karen Milburn is going to be retiring at the end of the year. So we'll have some big shoes to fill there.
I'm not going.
Yeah, yeah, all of us are. So that will be happening this week as well. There is a panel discussion related to the urban suburban program and cultural awareness on Thursday at Arondacoit. I've agreed to, to sit on that panel, so that will be happening at 6:45, Arondacoit High School, West Arondacoit High School. And then lastly, Roth's Fall Play is going to be on the 15th and 16th, and those will both be evening showtimes, I think, 7:00 PM. And I'm told that the, the script for the play was developed by students, and I think the title is actually called "It's Not a Play." So this will be interesting.
Very meta. I like it.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great. All right, um, let's move into board reports. First up is Equity and Inclusion Steering Committee.
Go ahead, May, because I took the night off because it was my birthday.
So, um, we had our own Ross Henrietta teacher, Shane Wayne.
Shane.
Shane. Uh, he did a workshop on the history of the housing practices. If you're not familiar with the term redlining, where, um, agencies used to draw lines around, um, communities and saying this is a desirable community and this is undesirable community and blocking people who are not white from purchasing and obtaining loans to buy housing in the other communities or which they determines undesirable. It's a great workshop. It's talked about the discrimination practices, including how, with the focus on housing. And he focused on Henrietta and gave, um, a little bit of a background of how, who are the people who moved here first and why they moved, why they chose Henrietta? Not because Henrietta was very accepting to them, but it was because the, it was the only option for them. So it's, I highly encourage it if you have access. I'm not sure if Pat can arrange that to have that workshop. He did a fantastic job presenting it. So, um, and I think it's online, you can see, uh, because he presented it to the whole community, yeah.
It was presented to a number of districts and other community organizations.
He goes around and, um, yeah, presented.
He's presenting it at the Pathstone event next week.
He just gave that talk a couple of weeks ago to the Department of Neurology, the medical center at, at the U of R. So that was, my worlds collided perfectly. An RH teacher and the Department of Neurology. It was great, as far as I was concerned. But yeah, fascinating talk. Thing, you know, I grew up here, things I wasn't even aware of in the history of Henrietta. And, yeah.
You, yeah, you most likely wouldn't be because that's just the way they did it.
Right. But I mean, redlining I was aware of and why the other districts are kind of the way they are, I was aware. But why Henrietta is the way it is and the history of that, and it goes back to the green lining that happened in the, in the, in the 60s. Fascinating.
And he connects how, um, you live in a certain community that's, you go to certain schools and then you go to college or you don't go to college, so they generally share wealth and how some communities are not, um, offered the same opportunities or they have the same access to these, um, opportunities.
And one of the faculty members made a comment about how some of the wealthiest parts of the cities have some of the schools that are the most lopsided in terms of their demographics. And how, you know, because a lot of those, um, the wealthy folks in those, in those parts of the city are sending their kids to private schools. Now, a lot of those individuals were sitting in the room. This is a room full of doctors. There was visible uncomfortable shifting of seats during that, but I kinda liked that, you know? It's good. It's good.
It was tough to sit through the presentation because some, some things were like, I can't believe they're doing that. Especially when he talked about plays in schools where students and teachers painted their faces black and that was something that's celebrated and was advertised in schools and in newspapers. So it was like, I can't believe they're doing that.
I'm a Kodak kid and the part about Eastman Savings and Loan, ESL, and how the company deliberately would only loan to certain people in certain neighborhoods, like the neighborhood of Brighton, that, that was shocking.
I guess who closed their account at ESL that day, the next day? Like, I didn't know. I didn't know that was, they were doing that. So I highly encourage that if you had a chance to sit for the presentation, it's, yeah, it's eye-opening.
Thank you. Uh, next is Labor Relations.
Yeah, the, uh, I sent the notes around the minutes. The topic was on developing leadership capacity and leaders among your teachers. And West Arondacoit and Brighton and Churchville Chi-Lite all spoke about how they involve their teachers in, you know, whether it's through mentoring or getting them involved in curriculum development or, you know, school improvement plans, et cetera, et cetera. Just how different philosophies on developing teacher leaders. It was an interesting, interesting talk. But there is a, there, there are a couple of meetings that are currently being held open for emerging topics. So, you know, if there's any burning labor relations issues that anybody would like to suggest as a topic for a county school board association labor relations luncheon, please feel free to let me or May know. Maya will be attending the November meetings. I cannot. So thank you, May, in advance. That's about it.
Great. Empac?
I was not there because I was at the conference.
Okay. All right. We're just buzzing to these next.
Talk about hitting the highlights.
The Henrietta Youth Assessment Team, I went there last night. We have a bunch of enthusiastic young people that were getting bags ready for the Galasano Hospital. They're just deciding what they want to do for the, um, next few months and they will be looking to start preparations for the MLK celebration in February. So they're just getting prepared for the activities to come.
Have they decided where they're gonna have the celebration?
Because I remember they were talking about moving the venue.
I haven't heard anything about where.
Still looking.
I'm not sure. Okay, thank you for the reports. Board members, please be prepared to speak about your sessions that you attended at the, uh, New York State Board Conference at our next meeting. And this brings us to our board recap.
You really want me to repeat everything Bo just said?
Slough items.
So there's a whole bunch of things coming up, but I'll just, would remind, just Karen sent us that. Next week is Volmer at 11:13, or on 11/13 at 8:15 in the morning. And just because tomorrow is the cultural fair at Winslow and it's tomorrow, I will just reiterate that. But I think Bo gave this other, I'm down not too long ago. And I will just end it by saying the same thing Jennifer always says, another fabulous meeting. There you go.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by James, seconded by May. Any discussion? Seeing none? Anyone in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? This is it. We did it. Done. Thank you. I don't know if I moved it along as fast as Bob, but we got that.
It's just fine.
Thank you.